All right, I want to call this meeting the order. Now six o'clock. December the eleventh, twenty twenty four. This is the Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District. Monthly meeting. So. We'll establish a quorum. We have new members here. Everybody's been sworn in, so we have a quorum full, quorum present. Now we'll send us the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you, Lord, this evening, just seeking your guidance, seeking your wisdom, and that you also give us the gift of wisdom. Lord, we thank you for those members that have served and the new ones that are sworn in this evening, Lord, and we just ask that we are able to unite and do good for this community. And take care of business that is good for Kenny County and Bracketville. Lord, we thank you for all that you do, and we ask you that if it is in your will, you bless us with some much needed rain. Your name, my prayer. Amen.
Okay, so now we're going to move to the next item on the agenda. Which is going to be the swearing in of not swearing in, but we're going to let new officers. No, no, the only thing that they need to do right now is we're going to go through the process of electing them, so somebody has to make a motion of who wants what, who wants what, and then go from there. If by chance everybody gets either tied or the motion dies, then it goes to the next motion. So. We'll start with. President of the board. So. Is there any nominations for president?
Nominate Wes.
Okay, I have a nomination from Mr. Shot for Wes Robinson. President of the board.
Matt, do you want to do this again?
I'm busy, 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 so I'd rather somebody that's got enough experience to kind of deal with this. That has the time to deal with. So. And that's my, that's my thoughts on it. I'm. Right now I'm busy, I'm waiting on a phone call from hundreds right now, so. Wouldn't mind taking the treasurer, the secretary, the, I've done the one before. But I'd rather have somebody that knows what they're doing to be able to deal with a presidency. So. We have a. Motion on the table. I have no objections to Wes being there. I'll second it. Is there any further?
Yeah, Matt, can we discuss that a little bit?
Yeah, we can discuss it.
In my opinion, I don't know, obviously, the new guy, but uh. Don't the officers usually get elected from the people that have been doing this for a couple of years? It seems to me that y'all that have had the experience like Blake and Charlie, Randy. That most of the, you know, especially the president's spot might be somebody that's been in these meetings for two years. Is that not?
Whoever the. It's whoever they decide to want to know. Wes has been on Regent J for I don't know how many years. He, he knows the ins and outs of. Just about everything there is to dealing with the water situation. He knows all that.
Alright, so then, so then. If there's a motion on the table, the like Wes as Randy proposed. And there's a second. What if it doesn't pass, then you pick somebody else?
Yeah, it's up to a vote. So it's the majority of the, the ones that are going to run it, so. That's the way it works. So. Any other discussion on it? I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? So we got four against.
I didn't know if we were supposed to be able to vote since we're not.
Yes, sir, you're able, you're able to vote.
Well. I don't know anybody here, so I can't vote either way.
And so you want to abstain?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I have two against, I want to abstain. So the motions are going to carry. Now we're going to move to vice president. Not vice president, it's going to be the, which is the treasurer's secretary.
Blake, Blake's been the vice president.
Okay, vice president who's.
Three positions, right? Didn't secretary and treasurer the same position?
Secretary and treasurer.
So vice president, have any nominations?
I nominate Blake Ward, if he's willing to serve.
You still want it? Does anybody else want it?
I mean, I'll serve again.
Alright, I'll second it. Any discussion? Put it to a vote. Favor. Abstain, abstain, so we have one abstain, everybody else is in favor. Motion passing. Secretary and treasurer.
Nominate you.
Alright. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Or put it place to a vote? Okay, one abstain. Is all, it's different, Mr. Henry. So those are the officers. Wes, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, I got it all right here in the book anyway.
Do you have a public comment? Discussion possible action approval minutes.
Did you sign out?
Did someone sign out?
It's up there.
Michelle Han.
I only comment has to do with chapter thirty-six.
Hang on, just one second.
Excuse me.
Read something here for, before you get started. Observers' comments should be limited to a maximum of three minutes to address the board regarding agenda items only. Observers must have filled out a public participation form and submitted it to the board prior to being in the meeting, so you're limited to three minutes. Please carry on.
Chapter thirty-six on your statements that you just signed. And your oath of office and your bond. I was going to ask if the bond has been applied for by every board member.
I'll address that.
Have they been, have they gotten their bond?
Yeah, we have not gotten it. They've signed the paperwork for it.
Well, it says here, under thirty-six point zero five five C. Before beginning to perform the duties of office, each director shall execute a bond for ten thousand dollars payable. To the district and condition on faithful performance of that director's duty. All bonds of the director shall be approved by the board and paid for by the district. So if you don't have the bonds. And it's not on your agenda to approve them.
You don't approve those bonds.
Excuse me?
You don't approve those bonds.
Well, it says under law that the bonds of the director shall be approved by the board.
I'll be glad for you.
I have a copy of that, if you need a copy.
Well, two of us already mentioned that.
I'm not arguing the law. This is what the law says.
I'm just trying to help you out here.
No, you're not. Thank you.
Actually, if you don't.
Speaking to the law.
You don't know if I have or not.
Are you assigned up to do public comment?
Continue on, Miss Shanahan. You have three minutes.
If the bonds have been voted on by the directors of the board. Because it says that you, before the beginning to perform the duties of office.
Yeah. I became aware of this. One director contacted me about three days ago, four days ago, another one contacted me yesterday about it. I talked to Texas Municipal League, I also talked to Greg. Our attorney and TML, Texas Municipal League, put me in touch with a bonding company. I went back through the files, I don't know, maybe way, way back, the director for bonded, but since back in. Two thousand seven, eight, nine, or whatever, there, there was no bonding. I checked with several other, I mean, I know we have to have it because it's in chapter thirty-six. I got the application in this morning, the directors have signed it, we'll be sending that. Emailing that to the lady, so much of the company tomorrow.
So they're not bonded yet?
No, not yet.
Would you like a copy of the law?
I have it.
I have the copies for every director, if they care for one.
Okay. You can, oh, welcome to pass it out to them.
Thanks for your comment. Is there anyone else signed up, public comment? Okay. Next. Discussion possible action approval of minutes from November twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Is additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve. Meeting minutes from November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion approved, do we have a second? Have a motion to approve in a second, the November twenty twenty-four meetings, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those bow at the same time. Five in favor, abstain. Discussing possible action of financial reports for November twenty twenty-four.
Man, I had kind of highlighted.
Okay, what's the highlight doing? Is that the?
Current, the current amount.
Okay.
Revenue and expenses, and then a highlight of the taxes that we've taken.
Alright, the avalorium taxes is two hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five cents. Total income is two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Total expenses, sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. The net profit losses, two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and nine cents. Avalorium taxes receivable, three hundred and three thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Expenses paid, payable, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Net, three hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and nine cents. Accounts receivable, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. The general fund, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-five cents. Money market, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Petty cash, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. The well log deposit, four thousand, text pool, eight hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-four. Dollars and seven cents. The CD number one is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents. CD number two is two hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-eight.
Any questions?
That's an action item.
I figured, but I thought they might add something. I have a question. Question asked during it. Any of the board members have any questions to ask about the plans?
Wes, if you don't mind, speak up, please.
Do you have any questions about financials? Just open a discussion, that's all.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion approved, do we have a second? Director Plan, motion to approve. Director Shot, second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All the opposed, same time. Review monthly investment officers' report. I don't think we've got an investment officer at the moment. General fund.
Oh, that's Blake. We'll make him do it. Just a review. I don't have any questions about anything on it.
It's just a review.
Just a, it's just a review. We don't have to read that one.
And we don't need to make any action on that one. Anybody got any questions? Moving on. Discussion possible action invoices, receipts, and invoice to pay.
I don't have any questions.
I don't think that requires any action either, does it?
It's an action. I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it. Motion to make a, seconded to approve. The invoices received and invoices paid, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same time. Some favor wanted to mention. Oh, let's see where we're at. Review Texas Water Development War drought index and aquifer monitoring data. Do I have something in this one?
Oh, it's right behind that. I don't see anything, I haven't been seeing on the drought monitor. Not good.
How many water?
Jim, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
In the back of this package is all these rain gauges that have all the data from these different rain gauges. I'd ask Dr. Hutson a little bit. He answered my question, I think, but Quad Eight O Seven, the data that comes out for the rain that's, you know, involved with determining the DFC. Right, so that Quad Eight O Seven data that comes out from the state or whatever in May. I mean, there's a delay for whatever reason, we could talk about why there's that delay for so long, I'm not sure, but. What gauges, and I don't know who knows, we could research this, but what gauges? Input Quad Eight O Seven data, are, are any of these gauges in there?
Yeah.
Which ones of these are in there? They're all in there, they get it from you, they get it from whoever, I don't know.
Yeah, um, number one, great question, just, and thank you for that. The how the EAA and Texas Bar Development Board, how they come up with the eight O Seven and how that data is in there and how it's all gathered together. Is a little bit of a black box. The state does it. Whole state is broken up into quads, we happen to be in eight O Seven, extends not only north of the county, but this east and west. All of the information, all the gauges that they use. On that, I don't know what those are, and we can go, you and I can go directly and go try to get them. And work on that, but there are, Texas Mezzanet is real-time data that is, and so. Kenny County, the district, we have eight separate gauges that we've installed in monitoring locations around the county. Are one through eight, and then the Texas Mezzanet, the stuff that's in Uvalde County, Edwards, there's someone Real. We've got a couple in Kenny. We look at all of that data just for our own benefit, like when we see water levels rise. Okay, did it rain in this certain area? We're looking at very specific rain gauges to see what we're doing. But, you know, just for our own analysis and taking a look at sea water levels going up and down, the. Eight O Seven, that's specifically for the DFC, and that's the way it's written, or that's in our management plan, or, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly, but.
No, it's how it's written.
So I don't know.
And the boundaries of Quad Eight O Seven are completely different than Kenny County, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, the gauges could be scattered all over the place, and I assume there's some kind of average. That they may base.
Exactly.
I mean, it could rain forty inches in one corner and fifteen inches in another corner. And then they do some kind of calculation and figure it out.
Correct me if I'm wrong, has that, has that not changed over the last few decades, how they're, how they're doing that as well? They've been modifying the way that they come up with the data, is my understanding. Let, hang on just for a second, let me finish my thought. Um, that is exactly why. We specifically are looking at individual gauge, because you saw what happened on July twenty-third. We got rain, we got rain in certain spots in the county, and we saw immediate results in some wells. And then very slow response, and I don't know if you want me to get into it, but I do have some chuckle, some graphs we could talk about if you'd like, but. Where we're still getting response now from some of that rain, as the water is slowly percolated through the aquifer. And, but we looked at very specific gauges within the county and out of the county. To, to, to compare that to what the water levels and what we saw, both in the spring and in some of the production wells in certain sections of the county, et cetera.
Just for this, well, this map, the. I'll check it out when I can look at it, you know, with some glasses, but the rain gauges location is on that particular.
Blue triangle.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
I can see those on the.
Okay, so let me, let me stand. Let me, let me de-correct it here just a little bit, because there are some blue crop triangles that are to the north. They're not included in that, but if you see some black writing, it's a note, it'll say rain gauges are eighteen to twenty, it's, it's up there, but.
Okay.
It is.
Outside the map.
It's outside the map, but they're on there.
And Quad Eight O Seven is still unknown to you, really. Like what Quad Eight O Seven does, you know what you do, but not necessarily where the state's gauges are and everything.
Um, I do not. That is, that's, that's a fair, that's a fair assessment. I know the boundaries of Eight O Seven. And you know where all the Texas Mezzanet stuff is, I know where all the EAA rain gauges, but how they do their math and how they come up with their average, I do not understand that algorithm. Okay, thank you. Director Robinson.
Y'all was just saying that algorithm has changed over the last few years as well, considerably.
It's been dynamic, absolutely.
I could draft you out.
Yeah, let's, if you had something to give us on the, on the monitoring network. Hey, I want to hear it.
Yeah, well, I could stand up here. My name is Jim Burton, I'm the director of memory, nice to meet you, Mr. Palmer, I, you and I have met. So. Great questions, this lead into it a little bit, this. Show me, let's see what we've got. Okay, so number one, Lost Forest Spring Basin, we are now one year into having a. Instrument in the spring basin of the pool. Mr. Guzman is not here, but he, Director Long is here with the fort. You can see, let's see if this works, obviously, we started. It doesn't, it doesn't work on the back, oh, it's, it's okay. Anyway, a year, you saw, we had water from April, spring went to zero, we got the rains July twenty-third, came back up, and this is where we've been. But why I start off with this is because we've been working for a long time to try to get an instrument in the spring basin, and we've had one now for a year. Next. Question, yes, sir.
Well. I'm pretty ignorant to all this stuff, but to me. I'm trying to understand how y'all are talking about this aquifer as being fed. This aquifer to me is fed from over in Rock Springs and other places.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, it's not exactly what falls here. It's feeding our aquifer.
Yes, certainly. Yep, no, it's, I would say that ninety-eight percent of the recharge into this spring comes out of Edwards County and the north, northeastern part of Kenny. We've been saying that from day one. Yes, sir, hundred percent agree.
That tears me up.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. This is. Where are we now? Okay, so duly, so what you're looking at on the left, left axis is the flow in Lost Forest Springs, which is the blue line. And the depth to water on the right Y-axis in the duly well, and you can see both on the left, which is July. Both were down low, spring was dry, duly was low. About thirty feet below ground surface, we got a rise in the spring, and then the spring has tapered off. We got a little bit of rain back in December, the, the spring came up and came back down. And one of the things that's interesting, so I've, I've only been here, we came back in on Sunday, been out a little bit in the county. But one of the things interesting for me, and I think this alludes to what Mr. Palmer was talking about, but. There, there is still water that is filling the aquifer from the rain event that we had back in July. And it is filling the aquifer at different rates in different parts of the county, and right now, the, the duly well is two, two feet below ground surface. There is still water that is coming into, on the Pental Valley area, and Michelle Han's property up in that direction, coming southwest. It is still filling up the aquifer, and we've got twenty-eight O Four, we've got water, groundwater well, or wells, there are artesian flow conditions right now, the groundwater is coming up out of the ground. Multiple location. I'm in, in, I'm, I will continue to talk, so if somebody asks why y'all have questions, just stop me. Um, next, yeah, let's keep going. Do well, this is just the same thing, but you can see how close the duly well is to the ground surface, I mean, we're right, we're right there. And when there's, when there's pumping, there is production out in that area. And you'll see the duly well, you'll see the water level fluctuate, six inches up and down, you know, when pump turns on, comes off, or whatever, but you're, but the recharge is still. Coming up into that area where it's pushing the water levels, water levels up. Yes, sir.
Do you have any indication of it rained over like in Rock Springs in that area? Do y'all have a? A chart? To see where it's being refilled from?
We do have gauges, and that's some of the Texas Mezzanet stuff that was north of the map. We've got Texas Mezzanet rain gauge data that we look at up in that area and track that. The answer to that question is sort of, we have some. And we have a whole bunch of equipment that after the holidays, we're going to be getting out, and we're going to be doing more of that, but that, you're asking the exact right.
Boiling Springs has a rain gauge, doesn't it?
Yeah, yes, sir, we got.
That's right, where.
Yeah, Boiling Springs, we've got four or five separate wells up in Boiling Springs, we have our own rain gauge at Boiling Springs, and then Texas Mezzanet has more. In Edwards, and then we've got some, Mr. Martin's Ranch, the Hill, Hill property out there on the western side of Edwards County.
Rain gauge number seven? Is rain gauge number seven? Is that boiling springs?
Boiling Springs is not included in there, it would be number three. And because it's not reported right now. It's a maintenance issue that we need to get up and take care. Yes, sir.
This might be totally off. But, been a while, and I went up through Rocket, up to the back on two seventy-seven. And the wind turbines are everywhere, okay? Does it control any weather here? Because it, my house in Spofford, it can rain all the way around me, and it won't hit a drop on my spot.
Yeah, that's a great question.
It's got to be changing something, but I'm get, you're the man I thought I could might ask.
Yeah, well, I, I don't disagree with you, but that is, that's, I don't have any information on that, but you're on to something, and people have talked about it, and. There's something out there, but I don't have any information or qualified to answer that, but I would not disagree with you. Let me just say that.
Okay, I didn't know if it pertained to this.
I think we might need to be looking into though.
Talking about rain, so.
So, so this is another one, this is the production well, this is up. Pental Valley area, this is Schubahorn. And again, the same thing, is that we, you know, there's water, you know, July, we're, we're plugging along there, well, all of a sudden, you know, mid-July, we start getting water. And again, the same thing is that we, you know, there's water, you know, July, we're, we're plugging along there. Well, all of a sudden, you know, mid-July, we start getting water, but this is still. Continue to go up, 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 up. We got a big drop there just in, in October, then it came back up. And I'm not sure exactly the production or what happened, but you can see that water level up in that area just continued to rise and then it's tapered off. But we're about five feet below grade, below ground right now. Next. I'm gonna see how many of these I have. Oh, okay, so this one, this is another good one. This is down south of Standard Lane. Um, and forty-one hundred. And in July, you see July, but you know, it starts off in July on the left-hand side there, pumping production up and down, up and down. And then around the twenty-third of July, not really much happened. We started getting a little bit. And then in, um. Uh, and then it, but then right about September, got a little bit of rain down in that area also, but this is one that is still. Water level has still continued to rise and right now there's nine feet ahead. Coming out of the ground on that particular well. And I know just in the, uh, landowner and. Uh, this pump in the well, we've communicated. I know that they were pumping back in July, uh, August, um, July, August, September. Uh, about eleven hundred gallons a minute and they could only get water to, you know, certain pivots. Today, there's a fifteen hundred gallon pump that is producing twenty-two hundred gallons a minute. Because there's so much pressure coming up out of the ground that he's feeding two pivots that are a mile away. Because there's so much pressure and so much water is coming up out of the ground. This is all sulfur water. But this, these are, this is the type of information that we're collecting and looking at and trying to see what are the ties? What's the, what are the ties to the spring? What are the ties to the other, um, the other wells in the area, et cetera, and the different geologic formations that are there? Next. From the, okay, so this one's completely different. So this is one, this is behind the fort. This is shallow, relatively shallow, less than two hundred and fifty feet. Um, it is in Austin chalk. This is really good water. Um, sits up above the, the Del Rio clay. And this one, you look July, August, September, you didn't see anything in terms of rain or any recharge into this well at all. Where we started to see recharge was. Wes. I gotta leave, so, uh. Just showing the deal, I gotta leave and I'll be back in just a little bit. Okay. So this is one that has responded completely different to some of the other ones. And this particular well, it's behind the fort. In fact, this is one of the wells where if you're driving down six ninety-three. And you look off to the left and there's, there's a pivot running and, and something back there behind south of the fort. Um, but this well, we got the rains in July, nothing really happened, nothing really happened. We got rains in September. We got about four and a half inches of rain down in that area, in the Austin chalk, in, in completely. And then, and then look what happens. You start seeing this one starts to rise because there was rain directly above it. And so it's just, again, this is just something that's responded a little different than some of the other ones and then has not continued to rise. You know, we got, we got the increase from the four and a half inches from, from, uh, uh. From October to, to November, and then it's just kind of leveled up. And the up and down is the production. This is a low production well, but. Anyway, next, so we got, okay, so these are good. These are challenging. Um, yeah, okay, so this one, this is. Yeah, okay, this is a good one, actually. Okay, I've got a couple more of these like this. Okay. Um, all right, so going out, going out towards Del Rio, out west on ninety, south, Bader, you know, Bader irrigation well. And we've been monitoring this one for a while, it's two thousand seventeen, not one of the first ones, but certainly for a while. Um, and originally we were thinking, oh, this is about three hundred feet deep. There's some of these wells, you know, trying to get records on them and talking to landowners. Do you know really how deep it is? Everybody's got an idea, but nobody really knows. Um, on some of them. This is one we thought was about three hundred feet deep. And we, you know, we got these little dips in June, you know, twenty-two. No, we saw, we didn't really, we saw a little one in twenty-three, but this other one in twenty-four. And then, probably the next slide, because I have a feeling I know it's gonna, I should know. Okay, so then we, so then I go back to the city well and I go, well, look at the city well in, in the same period of time period, you know, I got. Twenty-two and really little thing, twenty-three, look at twenty-four. You go again, and this well, by the way, no, just let's stay here for a second.
Yeah.
Cause this is a good, this is something also that really should be communicated and people need to understand this. This is your city well, number one. It's right here in the city yard, right this direction. You look at where, so there's your zero line. Right now, you're about ten feet below ground. Okay, the water level. In the lowest point, you're down around fifty, it went a little bef- below fifty, but maybe sixty feet. This well is nine hundred and forty-seven feet deep going down into water. So do you have that well, you're going down nine hundred and forty-seven feet, you've got water. And, and I, the drought, it's terrible, but there, this, there's water in the well, there's water in the ground. It may not be coming out of the ground like it is right now, but there's water in the ground. Um. I, I don't know why I haven't said all that, but I just did, anyway, next. All right, so here's, let me go back. Look at these same little dips. So remember the old Bader irrigation, we see it in city well, and then look at, um. Lindsay well, so this is.
Oh, thank you.
What's that?
Oh, thank you.
Around the same time.
Yeah, exactly. Same kind of deal. Look, June, June, right about the same thing. Now this well is going up three thirty-four. Um, on left-hand side between three thirty-four and six seventy-four. Before you get to Tularosa Road, right back up in the old Bondi Ranch. Um, but I've got the same kind of thing. This well's six hundred feet deep, we're down in the Edwards, all cones. So anyway, the same thing is, do I have one more? Dooley, okay, well, Dooley, look at the same, same kind of deal, Dooley. See these little connections, see words, see words dropping like that? Is this just coincidence? Is it something's connected? The difference is on some of these ones that are real deep. We think, okay, we understand the connection. We've got deep, you're deep Edwards water, we understand it's kept going down, et cetera. But the one that we thought was shallow over there, this old Bader irrigation, if that's really only three hundred feet. Why is it responding differently? If it is resp- if it is only three hundred feet and responding differently. That is really, really good information to understand in terms of both horizontal and vertical hydraulic connectivities. Transparency in the aquifer or, you know, is there something? Or is it like some of these other ones also deeper than that and somehow we just have the number wrong? And this is something in the next three days, we're, I'm gonna, we're gonna go out and figure out. This is something Dr. Bill wants to know. He wants to understand. Is this, how deep is this well really? Because I can have two different well, I can have a well over here and a well right there, and if that one's four hundred feet deep. And this one's fourteen hundred feet deep, they're affecting the aquifer in different way. And so understanding that and that's, um, anyway. Do I have any more of these or what? Oh, Tularosa.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, so the, the depth of the wells and what, and where the water is coming from is extremely important. And understanding that and getting it right is, is, is exactly what we're trying to do. And contrary to what some people, but will believe or not, we're trying to find a connection with the spring. I'm trying to figure out which wells are influencing the spring, which ones, and the only thing. I mean, not get into all that right now, but, but we are actively looking at trying to understand and to characterize the system because the lost Morris. Mud springs, you know, pento, strickland, if it flows, you know, that is the natural, um. The natural, uh, health of the aquifer. At some, at some level, this water coming out of the ground is, indicates where the aquifer is. And if we can understand that, that's the goal. That's what we're trying to do. With that, Tularosa well. Tularosa well is the DFC, the, uh, is a DFC or GMA ten. Okay, this district is GMA ten, junior seven. So with GMA ten, Tularosa well, Tularosa well, if you go up three thirty-four, Tularosa Road, it's right there on the left-hand side, on the west side of the road. Um, originally drilled by the E A A, now, now, um, monitored by Texas Water Development Board. This well is seven hundred and seventy-five feet deep. And I, we, I have been saying this since I started working here with the district in two thousand and thirteen or something. The, this well will tell you the health of Lost Morris Springs. How, why, I don't know, but if you look at two thousand eighteen, you know, Lost Morris, look at how high the water level was up in the aquifer. That, you know, the spring was flowing at sixty CFS or whatever it was, Tularosa came down. And this, there's, this is not influenced by pumping. This is pure recharge going up towards the northeastern part of the county. And Tularosa is that direction. If we set a, a line and went from where we are now, just directly that corner, you're going across that well. From Lost Morris Springs to the corner. And when it rains, it goes up. And you look at what happened since twenty twenty, we never really got any rain. We got a little bit in twenty twenty-two, you got a little bump. And then it came down, came down. And in June of twenty-four, that well is the lowest it's ever been in recorded histories as long as it's been there, the data that's available. We got rain and look how far, look how far it went up. It went up seven feet. Right, about seven, something like that. And the spring, that went up seven feet. The spring in thirty-six hours went from zero to thirty CFS. And this well is a really, really good indicator of how, of the health and what's gonna happen in, in, in the spring. And we need to understand this. We need to study it. We need to look at the recharge. That's why we've got, um. Director Minley, we've got rain gauges up in that area. I've got four or five. We've looked at the Texas mezzanet stuff. If you look at all my little blue. Triangles that are on the map, we've got all kinds of stuff up there looking. So when it rains, what's happening with Tularosa? And then watching the flow that USGS reports out of the spring, but also the spring basin itself, the instrument that's in there. Measures pressure, gives us the amount of head and, and, and when it, when the water level goes down and the pressure is diminishing, obviously the flow is gonna increase. When you've got a lot more water, brings it up to the top of the bathtub, you've got water coming out. And so it's combining all that information is what we are trying to do. Yes, sir.
Okay. I know I asked about the wind turbine. And these correlations on this map. Could it not be checked whenever they put the wind turbines in, change the whole flow of the air to where the. We're not getting recharged where we're supposed to be? I mean, if you're looking at everything, you know, we can check out when they put these in and when all this started changing so drastically.
Mm-hmm.
To the extremes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to me, all this is all connected. Everything is connected. So we have to look at all possibilities. So, this is why I brought the wind turbines up.
Yeah.
Okay. There's gotta be a change of airflow.
Hmm.
Change of everything behind it and in front of it, you know, once it goes behind it, then it depends on which way the wind blowing, it's gonna change the weather pattern and stuff. That, that's just in my head, okay? That doesn't mean I'm correct, but I'm, I think it stands to be looking at to correlate with these maps that you're showing on the.
Yeah.
Mount of the water.
Yeah, that, yeah, I, I would concur. That is a topic for a different evening.
Okay, well.
You know, and, I mean, I think that for this board, you can look into it and, I mean, look at Anticacho and everything that happened over there. And all the work that we're doing on the Uvalde line, Gun Hill and everything south of that, we've seen changes down there.
Certainly an interesting note and if they have any impact.
Yeah.
Uh.
Got anything else?
Um.
I don't know, can I? Um, I do, can you show, you show one more side, Mike, it might have.
One, uh, just the next one. What's next?
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. I'm, and I know this may not be right now, but I need the board to understand that we need some direction on the app. Because the app is ready to go, like my, my lap, I can go right there to my laptop, I can pull it up online. I can show you every well, all the stuff that's in there, but no, I don't, I don't, don't get into that just because it's gonna be too much. But here's the issue with the app. Is that right now, the groundwater district rules allow an individual who has a permit, maybe they have one permit in five wells. Way the rules are written and they use those five wells to feed some pivots. Way the rules are written. That, that, that individual can provide one number for all those five wells. And that's, that's, that, you know, hey, I pumped, I'm picking up a thousand, thousand acre feet. It came out of these wells here for, for, that's how, that's how much. You know, the, was permitted or whatever. And originally, I think that was because people were concerned that maybe someone's gonna pump over their permit limit. So you gave a number and they reported annually on what that is. What we would like to see, what I would like to see, I think what Dr. Bill would like to see is the amount of water that comes out of each of the well. Right? Because, I mean, like some folks, I've got a wells a couple miles apart. You know, and, and this well might be, you know, three hundred feet deep, this one might be thirteen hundred feet. And to understand wh- how much water is coming out of each of the wells, not just based on the permit. And I understand that, you know, there was concern early on about maybe somebody's gonna overdo their permit or whatever, but. It really should be based on scientific information and what's necessary in order to make good decisions on how to manage the water. And in my mind, and in talking with Dr. Bill, it would be better for us to have individual numbers from each of the wells. And why this goes to the app is because obviously the groundwater pumping report app is for permit holders. So permit holders, if they want, can come in and provide, you know, give information or whatever. Like that unit that's sitting right behind you on top of that bookshelf right there, that, um, that, that little gray unit. That is a macron, we've been working with macrometer for about a year and a half. To get an instrument that can go on top of an existing meter and that, that little unit can go on an existing meter. And report that to the cloud into the district system. And I did, we just bought, this board just bought fifteen of those. They were just delivered. We're gonna get them. I've already got landowners and, and, uh, permit holders that are willing to put those in. And that will help, that eliminates a problem or whatever. But at some point, the app, if, if we're gonna load this out, it needs to, do we want just the permit number? Or do we want, do we want them to provide each, you know, um, a, a value for each individual well? And, and so at some point, before any of this happens here, we need to understand how to do the final touches on giving.
When we click on the app.
Yes, sir.
Is the app a website or is the app on my phone app?
No, it's, it's a web-based app. I, I, I'm not using that. I can go live if you wanna look at it, but.
So I mean, web-based app, you mean, I log on to, I, if I was a permitee, I would log on to a website. And then on the website, I input the data.
Yeah, you could, I mean, if you could do it on your, it's, it's not a phone app that's gonna vary based on Android, iOS, what version, all that kind of stuff. It's on the web. And there, it's on the, it's on the.
So website that you log into with the number and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it, yeah, and it'll, I mean, I can, I don't know, yeah, I could show you, but.
But it's ready to take information. If we figure out exactly.
Yeah, and everything's already built in there. Marty's put all data from two thousand and three, I think we're still missing. Oh, six or something, but a little bit of half of those six, but the, um. Uh, but from oh three to twenty twenty-three, all the data is in there. Um, and all the permitees are in there. If I've got this permit, it's got five wells, this permit's got four wells or whatever, it's all in there. The measuring unit, the smear meter serial numbers, whether it's gallons times ten or acre feet times, you know, whatever, all of that's already built in there. Put a meter reading, hit a button, calculate the volume, photo, yes, submit, up. You know, so.
My takeaway is the only, the only issue at this point is aggregate reporting.
Yes, sir. You know what? You said it better than I did. I'm gonna sit down.
Well, I'm not done with you yet.
Oh.
Where are you going?
Director Ward, yes, sir.
So I'm confused.
Okay.
I thought that all of our reporting now was per, by well.
No.
Because every well suppose can have a meter.
Um, it is, uh, every well, um, I'm gonna direct stay here for a second.
Yes, sir.
Um, the r- rules say you need to report the number by permit. Right? Yeah, but there's a, as you, Director Robinson, you said it correctly. There is an aggregate. Right? Whether or not wells have, every well needs a meter, has a meter, doesn't really matter. At the end, there's a number that goes to. Um, it can be reported aggregate. It does not need to be reported by well. What I can tell you is that the landowners and the permitees, the holders who have multiple wells. Have been extremely gracious with their time and I have been on the phone for hours talking, okay, what about this one? How much came out of here? How much came out of here? And then, you know, it's all on field net. They've got all their stuff, what it is, and they've helped us understand the monthly differences. For each of the wells, but before something gets rolled out to the community and to everyone, you just need to understand. You know, how, what we wanna do and there are other ways. Marty's, he goes out every month.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Why can't we just do that?
Yeah, and that, and some of that, you know, originally we didn't have Marty, you know, and there was a lot of things about people not doing their pumping reports right. And all that kind of stuff. And so that, and so when, um, Mr. Schuster was here, let's get something web-based app where we can, you know, just. Um. As I recall.
The uniform and. You started developing this before Marty was hard.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And then it was, well, no, you know, let's, we need somebody to go out there and look at all the read meetings, uh, readings every month. And so that's what she's been doing. And I, we've got these other instruments now that can report automatically. And so there's, you know, there are multiple ways to get the information that we need. And we are miles ahead of where we were a few years ago. And so, but in terms of the app, you know, there's a lot of, I've heard, you know, hey, where is it? What's the progress? I know Matt keeps asking and he's not here, um, Director Bland, but you know, where are we, you know, et cetera. I, um, Director Gaines and I talked about this, I think during some of the rules committee things about how, you know, what we're gonna do and how to do it. Um, but we, you know.
So what is your wish? What do you got?
Um, I, I wish, I think my hope is that you will give this. Um, I I wish, I think my hope is that you will give this community and permittees as much flexibility as you can, so you can get monthly information from every well. And some people, I know Mr. Now I do not want to mention any names, but you know who I'm talking about, will absolutely never log on to this for whatever. And he's got several wells. And he just, you know, he's been doing a certain way. He records every single month, every detail. And but he, you know, and um but they won't wouldn't want to do this. And then you get somebody like Mr. Davis, who writes down every single detail, he he would probably do it. I don't want to speak for him, but you know, and so to to give people flexibility, if somebody is willing to, I know Mr. Robinson has said, hey, go put one of those on mine. It'll just come all the way up into our system automatically. And, you know, we can do that.
How many of these do we have? Sixteen?
Uh fifteen or sixteen. Wow, yeah. But I think there's fifteen or sixteen, right? And that's just because that's how many people right now are willing to do it.
So thinking about our future and our generations coming, what I've reflected back on and been looking for and searching for, my grandfather was an irrigated farmer in Kenny County in the fifties and sixties, seventies, eighties, all the way to the eighties. He kept perfect record keeping. And so what I would say to any agricultural pumper is you never know who's going to be looking at that. My granddad probably never dreamed that I would be looking back at his records fifty years ago. Um, you know, the same thing with Mr. Davis, you know, the more data that we have, of course, is why we're doing all this uh that the science proves it backs it, whatever we decide to do. Um. That's why I'm asking you, is that what Marty's collecting every month? Will that suffice?
Uh, that works absolutely, but can't you get it on every and every single well? I mean, it's, you know.
Well, I mean, the the wells that aren't in use, we don't have to mess with those, right?
Yeah.
The permitted wells that aren't being used, because that'll be fine on annual, right? If they're not being pumped.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, and I most of the permitted wells in this county are not being are not operable. Absolutely. And there is a lot of water in the guy, a lot of water rights. Or uh, how do you say that? A lot of, there's a lot of water right holders that are not us utilizing the right, their water right. They're not pumping. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay. Just like you just said, there's a lot of these wells permitted that are not being operated.
Yes.
Now, this goes back to your charts. As they've been checked and see which wells have been brought back in those years, if the fluctuation has been so bad. Because I worked for J R Hamilton and some of those wells that he had on the Pinto
Yeah.
Hadn't been running in years until he bought it.
Yeah.
So and at the time, the Pinto Creek was flowing real good.
Yeah, we we I have um um I'm on Hamilton's property um maybe a dozen time, at least a dozen time this year.
Well, I'm just saying that in the correlation of when he started using water there and the years it was on this map.
Right.
How many other places were brought back inactive and in use? Could have changed the fluctuation is what we're having here in those years.
Uh, you know what? No, but we've got that. And some of that, all the year, all the uh the irrigation stuff that Bill did, all of the the inventory, the well inventory that we did was, I'm looking at you, I'm thinking about Carlos over back there. Absolutely. That's exactly correct. And we've got new water. I mean, you look at some of the, you know, we had ninety six ninety six hundred acre feet, you know, we had new water that was coming out. Well, where was it coming out? You know, we've got, you know, there's there's these pseudo zones that, you know, well, we got a lot of new water coming out of the sulfur stuff down there. We've got some stuff that that used to be pumped over here. That's not, that is all part of the equation. It's all things that we're looking. And that's all. Those are things that are being built into Dr. Bill's model, which different.
But and and my trying to figure this out, even back whenever I was working for Hamilton, he had bought the Dos Angeles.
Yep.
And they weren't operable. And he brought them in again.
Yep.
You're talking about the sulfur wells, one of them would pump one day, my pump for a week, and then it just disappeared. And it was not even capped. I mean, it just did this off and on when it wanted to.
And and you know, a lot of those wells down there, I don't mean to interrupt, you know, a lot of those down there aren't capped. And right now there's water coming out of the ground.
Yeah.
You know, and it's all blue, green sulfur turquoise, nasty hydrogen sulfide smelling
Right.
stuff.
But the cows still drink it.
And the cows are drinking it. And somehow Mr. Sodoff has figured out a way to put it on crop and to have it grow.
Is it, but is it correlation, like when he brought these two different places back in operation, does it have a fluctuation on the map at the same year?
That, I mean, that is exactly what we're looking at. And we've been talking about that the last year and trying to get the information and get all the data. And and it's
Well, knowing that's kind of what we're striving for.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Figured out.
Yep. I mean, and that's the goal. And this is, this is a long term mission to understand what's happening in the district.
Well, just like you said earlier, we've got a year of reporting on lots more spring.
Yeah.
We've got eight years on Tularosa up here on the deal, and there's no way that we can
Yeah, and we
do the same stand because we didn't have a monitor.
Yeah, and we've been trying to get on there and to get that done for ten years. And finally, this last year, we did it. Look at mud. We've got pictures of Carlos nine, two thousand and thirteen with mud, trying to figure out an instrument, how we can get it in to measure mud stuff. And it wasn't until technology about three years ago, we were able to get these tiny little sub three eighths of an inch transducers. And Randy has been great. He's helped us. He anything we could do. But we got these little things designed out of switcher win or something, transducers, and we're able to get them in a tiny little sounding hole. BCQ was okay with. And where we're measuring mud. Now, we've had that for about the same, right? Carlos, you probably did it or whatever. But, you know, so there's some of it's been technology. Some of it has just been access and, you know, trying to get some things to work, Mr. Palmer.
Yes, sir. Just to clarify what I think you alluded to earlier about how you and and you obviously coordinate with Dr. Hudson. And the data that you would like is monthly information, you said right in the beginning, from each well instead of the aggregate.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yeah.
And the way that you would recommend to do that, would you recommend that just Marty does that? Or would you recommend a different way to do that?
I would um um top of mind, I think you want to give the permit holder the most flexible way you can do it. I think there are several that will probably accept a macrometer meter onto their meter, and it will automatically come up into our system and you're done. And I've got it. And and we can
So if we get those, can she fill the gap and do all the rest?
Yeah. Um, yes. Yeah, let me, let me, I let me think about, I I I see where you're going. Um.
Well, I mean, because it's been brought up in prior meetings that Marty could do it all. If she could do it all, great. But I'm asking you if that's and her, obviously, you guys get together. But, I mean, can that be done? What what this is a little different, what you want now, might be a little different than what we've been doing before. So if we want what
As long as Marty has access to every permittee that is in this county, then absolutely, I think she can do it.
If she has access.
If she has access.
She doesn't have access now, or?
There is one property where right now she does not have that.
Right. We need to work on that and know who that is, I guess, don't we?
Okay, we need to move along, bro.
Okay, thank you.
We got, we got another half of an agenda to get through. Sorry. Uh, discussion possible action, Kenny County Appraisal District offered by Charlena Cavender, Purchase Trust Property, Unit One, Lot Two Fifty Four. They just came up last month and kicked down the road. Know that last time there was some question about where the funds end up.
Uh. I've I mean, I hate to sound like this, but I don't care. I don't care where the funds wind up, because if you get it back on the road, I know where the taxes wind up.
From what I've understood, I asked, um, it's divided between the taxing entities.
I'm sure it goes probably pay any back taxes first, and then I would be split out according to the levy more likely, but.
Uh, it's only three hundred dollars. I make a motion we accept.
I second that motion. This has been made in second. All in favor, raise your hand. All those vote, same time. I've been favorite one percent.
I'm twelve. Discussion possible action, proposed draft amendments, and call a public hearing.
Let's let me take that one if I could. There've been discussion over the years, uh, over the year about the motion. So we finally settled this week that these rules were approved by all seven uh board members back in June. So all that is required at this point is to set a uh uh, there's, there's a minimum time, twenty days, something like that for a uh
Let me ask you a question real quick. You're saying this board approved these proposed rules in June?
Look, let me explain that. Yes, they did. That doesn't mean they become rules. What it means is that we have
I'm not, that's not what I'm asking. I'm at, you're saying this board, not the rules. This board approved these rules in June.
They did.
Okay.
And so all we need to do now is set a public hearing. You know, within the time frame or something, I would propose a public hearing, say at five o'clock on our January meeting. After the public hearing, procedurally, what happens in the board discusses them and, you know, approves them or not. Uh, it doesn't, you know, by by setting public here and you're, we're not you know, pass the rules, we're just, we're just getting them in front of the public that we that what that we that we proposed and voted on back in June.
I don't see where you voted on these in June.
Pardon me?
I don't see where you voted on these in June.
We absolutely did. Um, it's not in the minutes. It is in the recording and the video of the meeting. Janelle has gone back and looked and confirmed that.
We've we've been in the minute. She said no action was taken.
No. No, the 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 minutes said, the minutes were, there were no minutes in June about this, but it's in the video. And it's in the audio. And it was a seven to nothing vote. I sent, I didn't have your um information this week. I sent it to Matt, Blake, and Randy. You know, I didn't um didn't have anything. But anyway, back in June, I sent a link to the video, and it's right after about the one hour mark in that June twelfth meeting. And Janelle went back and confirmed it. So all we need to do now is set a public hearing and then discuss it after that public hearing. So I make a motion, we set a public hearing.
Second. The next has been made in second, and now we're going to talk about it. Because if you don't have a set of minutes that said that you voted to do that, you've got a little bit of a procedural problem. You need to fix that.
I agree, but it doesn't change the fact that it happened.
Fix that before you go forward.
I I don't think that's true. If the fact that there was a clerical error in the minutes does not change the fact that it happened.
You're talking about holding a public hearing for something. I think we're going to dot all your
There are a number of people in the audience that are here now. I mean, they heard the thing back in June, too. I mean, it's
I'm talking about procedure, not whether it was done or not. I'm not arguing whether you did it or not. If you did it, you did it. But your minutes need
So what? Do you want? Do you want to? Do you want another motion?
No, I think you
Then do it, you have to have another vote now. And then set the public hearing. You want me to?
I don't think the meeting minutes need to change to have a public meeting. The the rules are not rules or even close to rules yet. The rules are what the public is going to comment on, and then the board votes on said rule. The board is going to vote on those after the public has a chance to do that. So we've been through this for months. And it was, it happened. Janelle, you can explain the history if we want to go there again, but it's obviously on the tape. Those rules are there. I'm not sure the minutes have to prove that that happens to set a public meeting. I'm of the opinion, we need to have a public meeting. We're supposed to make rules, far as I know, within a year of when the management plan was done. Dr. Bill suggested these, these rules aren't even complicated. They're the same rules Dr. Hudson recommended to the board in September of twenty twenty three, when he did the speech over in the big building over there. They're the same rules, or three simple little rules. Let the public comment on those rules, and then let's vote on those rules.
Well, my opinion of it is, you have procedurally flawed yourself to where you've got, you've gotten where you're at. And if you continue forward with it, you're putting yourself out there to be shot at by anybody who wants to attack it because you didn't do it right to start with. You didn't cross all your uh, you didn't dot all your i's and cross all your t's. Now, if the board wants to continue forward with that, that's fine.
What would make you feel better? You want me to, you want me to the hold the first motion, make another one to approve the rules, and then we can set a public hearing?
You guys can do whatever you want to do. I'm
No, no, what would make you feel better?
Telling you, what you're trying to do here is you're trying to force something to happen when you haven't got there in the right process to begin with. You don't have your minutes reflecting what you did. You've got a bunch of amendments back here. And talking about some of these, these motions that you made. Uh, you got a motion about here that says you rescinded the rules.
Though that was a different set. Those were not done. The board never voted on those, and those were done in July. Those are not the same rule.
Say these were votes seven to oh, right here, right here.
Right. That's a different set of rules. You're talking about apples and oranges.
Hmm, different set of rules. Okay, these weren't in there either. All I'm telling you is you can't have your minutes reflecting something that not reflecting what you're trying to do. I don't think that's the right thing to do. Don't want to do that? That's fine. Vote that way. We'll go forward.
Yeah, these things were not that controversial. We had that fifteen member Rules Committee. I mean, it was, if these are unanimous or within one or two unanimous, and the board voted seven oh in favor of it.
I'm going to say this over and over again. It has nothing to do with content of the rules. It has to do with how you got there and the procedural steps that you didn't get covers to get there. I don't care what they say. Votes, board's going to vote them up and down. Uh, I'll vote them based on what they say, but uh, it's not about what the rules say. It's about how you've got their procedure release to present them to the public. And the fact that you don't have that reflected in your minutes. And I think you've got a problem with that. You don't? Continue forward. Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm not talking. That's what I mean.
Uh, I I don't care who it is. The public isn't going to interrupt the meeting right now. Okay, so that's fine. We have a motion and
Well, no, no. Do you want? Do you want a motion to get in the minutes now?
I'm I'm not telling you what to do.
We're gonna have to vote.
I'm telling you what my
We're gonna have to vote on the motion that's on the floor, but
Well, I'll I'll hold it if you want to know.
And I don't think you need to do that, Charlie. What's it take to change the minutes, Janelle?
I doubt not because those the the chairman and it did not reflect the motion, which they should, you know, they should have. So how I don't know how you go about and and the following month those minutes were approved.
I'm sure that they can be amended.
So why can't we vote to amend the meeting, the minutes before we vote on the new rules? And then the new minutes are going to reflect exactly what everybody knows what they said.
I'm not voting to amend anything without looking at the tape. So
You don't have to, you don't, you vote whatever you want to vote on, the motion that's on the table. You don't want to vote for this, then vote no. If you want to vote, yes, vote yes.
It doesn't need to be an agenda.
But that can be done in the next meeting. The minutes can be
Yeah.
Public hearing, move on. It's happening, whether it's in the minute.
All right. Now, we have a motion and a second to put this up to public. Put this up uh for uh, public hearing, right?
Right.
That was your motion?
Motion.
Repeat your motion one more time.
Make a motion that we hold a public hearing on the proposed rules at five o'clock on, what is that, January eighth? Is that the second Wednesday? I think it is.
That's right.
Okay, and that's your second.
Yes, sir.
You said at five o'clock?
Yeah, let's have it at five o'clock before the six o'clock meeting next month.
Someone has to work. Someone just have to work.
Which it's a public, uh, Greg, our attorney says the board does not have to be here.
Okay.
It's it's simply for the public to comment. The board is not required. They're they're welcome, but they're not required to be at at a public hearing.
Okay.
Any other, any other discussion we call a vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those vote, same time. There's more, you abstaining?
I'm staying.
Okay, three in favor, two against, one extension. Get that, Janelle?
I'm looking to make sure we can get it in the paper. Uh. Yeah.
What is the deadline on the paper? Twenty days?
It'll be the nineteenth when it goes. You got right on the money.
Let's, yeah, let's get moving on that so we can have it.
Okay. We got that done. General manager report. Yeah.
Oh, no, you Oh, no, you skipped, um.
Oh, excuse me, I, I was in the back of the book and my bad. There we go. Well, we got that thirteen, there we go. Discussion possible action, approval of signatories, all bank accounts.
Who are the signatories now?
All the directors, plus me.
All of them? Really? We saw.
That's, that's, I don't know, that's how it's been since I came to work here, so.
I didn't remember science.
I get who and get around.
So what do you need, a motion to add the, the, the new directors?
It needs to be.
Delete the, the, de- delete four and add three?
Just go ahead and add. A motion should be made to authorize all directors, along with the general manager, sign checks on behalf of the district for the purpose of paying bills. Transfer of funds from the county. Specifically, check your sign with the secretary treasurer or the president. When the general manager, but any other directors may sign as needed.
I make such a motion.
Second. Can I say something? Made and seconded to approve all directors, the signatories, along with the general manager. All those in favor?
Not voting.
He's got. Hey, you got a comment, no, no, let's talk first. We talked, we talked before we did the vote.
I was afraid I was voting. I really don't want to be on any signature pills. I'm not qualified. I don't understand most of this yet and I'm still working on it.
Well, in all honesty.
You don't have to sign.
Uh, yeah, they only, they only put seven on there in case they can't find somebody.
Nobody's available.
Sign a check. If somebody's out of town, there are seven people and they got lives and, and nobody gets paid for this. And sometimes they might have trouble finding somebody to sign a check down here on a due forget. So that's why they put seven on there, but if you're.
I'm like, I don't, I don't want to, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, okay. You want to, you want to amend that motion? Well, I mean, I don't think it needs, I don't think.
I think it needs to be amended because you don't have to sign.
Yeah, just don't sign it. Yeah, just don't sign it.
Yeah, just don't, don't ever call to sign.
Okay, we're being deep enough like it is, gentlemen.
You got it. We got any more discussion on it here?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of vote, raise your right hand. All of us opposed, same time.
I just get confused about every direction.
Okay, there you go.
Now, no, okay, and I think I've already explained it. I think, I think the first, first thing I had of was the, the bond for the director. And like I said, how this came about, I just, I had no clue had gone back. Two thousand, didn't find anything that had ever been done, did the oak ballfish, but didn't. Find anything in there. Anyway, moving forward, we do have the bond, all the directors have signed off on. Um, I'll be emailing it to the, to the bonding company. So that's where we, that's where we stand on that. It's going to come for the seven directors. It will cost us roughly two hundred and eighty, three hundred dollars a month. If we go ahead and do it for a three-year period, we'll get a fifteen percent discount. You know, pay it like what it wants or whatever. Pay, in other words, pay the two, two hundred and eighty, three hundred dollars annually if we pay that. To agree to do with, they'll just bill annually, but if we agree for three years, they give us fifteen percent discount. So.
Would you say discount for, discount for three years? Well, there are three of us that only have two years left on a term, so.
Well, you don't have to.
No, since.
It's only on the incoming.
In talk, in talking to the lady, uh, the representative. But if we have ones that come off in two years, then.
They, they, they pro rate?
We'd send them something, yeah. Now, this, okay. This needs to be agenda items for next month and to what would be retroactive to today's date. So this will be in the agenda for next month. But, and I understand what it says in, in chapter thirty-six, but in, in. Talking with several different ones that are in the know, if we, we don't have anything, this, this will be in place by our next meeting. We don't have anything here today that would. That really deals with approving finances or anything like that, anything that would be. Might be questionable, so we're. Okay, I think for this meeting. So, uh, let's see, you know, new well application since the last board meeting. We've only had eight new applications to exist well for this thing, January twenty-three, uh, through this month so far. Um, Regent Jay met last Thursday, um, watched it. And it was the consultant was just giving a report on the. Uh, IPP work that they're doing. The GMA ten meeting was last Monday. And I had planned to go to that, but then our auditors were here. And essentially the main thing that they had on the agenda that time is to review the. Uh, all the district's management plans, that's done like once a year. And so I set a thing in to, you know, for them to be able to go ahead and. Review ours at the same time. Uh. The auditors, we didn't get that on the agenda this time, but it's. Maybe just as well, because they're still waiting on a couple of bank confirmations. And we, I remember our previous auditors have that, there's. One of the banks is very slow at getting, you have to keep calling and calling from the, get confirmations back, but they're. For the most part, ready, ready to go on it. Uh, we could even, if you wanted to before the, you know, before the end of the month, if y'all wanted to have a special meeting just to approve the audit. That's, that's entirely up to you all, if you want to wait till the January meeting.
It's on the eighth this time.
Yeah.
Holidays and such, it's way late. You know, put it on the agenda, please.
Yeah, set it up for the fifth chamber meeting. Uh, it's gonna be January.
Yeah.
And I think I've reported that, that, uh, Dr. Bill had planned to be here this month. But he, it's been for a number of years, been involved and I'm sure a lot of you have heard about the. New Mexico, Texas lawsuit over the Red Grand, it's been going on for years. And he's one that's had to go and. Just testify for lack of a better word. He got pulled, pulled in all that. So he's in Washington D.C. this week.
So he'll be here in January, you're saying?
Yes, anyway, that's what I'm.
Do you know if his model's ready yet, or he's going to come in January, but the model is ready or not ready or?
I don't have, I don't have a firm answer for you on that, but I will find out. I think for the, for the most part, Jim might know more than.
Well, I, I can tell you right now, he's waiting on some information from me before things are finalized. So I can, I can tell you, he's not going to come in here and have it final, but. There, it's substantially complete. The law, I think some of the simulations he wants to talk to the board about. Excuse me, but there's a couple pieces of information that he's waiting, waiting on for me.
And when, what's the etiquette on getting him that or when?
Some of it I sent, uh, Monday, those I sent Monday, um, the rest of it I hope to have by Friday. And some of it involves records here, looking at some stuff. There's still instances, um, half a year of pumping. From two thousand and six that we're still trying to, you know, figure out, um. And then there's some numbers, there's something like the, the beta irrigation, where the depth of that is important. And so there, there's some little things, but the primary, the, the geology, the layers, the grid system, that's all completed, but. You know, and, and you know, I'm, if those, you know, Dr. Bill, if he's going to do, he's going to do it right. And so if he needs something, it's, that's where he's at. So whether.
But what he's looking for you, from you, would happen this month sometime.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, and then he's going to need to do whatever he's doing. I mean, he's in Washington C, B C right now. Congressional hearings with people and I don't know exactly what he's doing, but he's testifying with somebody. If he's not done, I don't know how much time he's going to need and I cannot speak to that, but Mr. Palmer, I can tell you that some of the information, some of his delay is on me.
And that, that's all I have. Merry Christmas and hope everybody enjoys the holidays and if you're traveling, stay safe and. Enjoy family time.
Merry Christmas and a happy new year to everyone against a leave, going to executive session. And that's where we're at. Please ask to go on executive session. Let's ask, ask everyone to step out of the building.
You want to turn that off?
Here's your phone, sit, record on the phone. Yeah, you got your, uh, you can put the recorder on your phone. No, I'm on.
Okay. We'll fix it where it records.
No, give it to me, I have no idea.
You can fix it to record. You can fix it to record.
Call, call the twelve here, what? You're young.
I was just going to say maybe another reporter.
Oh, there you go, record right there. It'll be on, it'll be on video.
What's that?
They're recording right there.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, we're going to reconvene back into regular session.
Eight thirteen.
Just wanted to do on my phone.
Phone the friend.
It got rid, it got rid of that.
What was that show?
Just take a.
Who wants to be a millionaire?
Just take that. Yeah, that's what we're doing. We're reconvening the regular meeting, uh, regular session at eight fourteen. We took no action in executive session. Uh, discussion of possible action on actions deliberated during the executive session. Uh, I would like to move that, uh, make a motion to approve a one-time salary increase for the three district employees in the amount of. Three percent of their annual, of their twenty twenty-four annual compensation. For one month of December twenty twenty-four, this fee paid as a bonus. Second. Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Five in favor, two in stances. Five in favor, two in stances.
Staying, I'm sorry.
Uh, we didn't, we don't know anything, so we.
Yeah.
Director Millie and Rick Palmer. Um, item number sixteen, future agenda.
Mr. President, with the board's permission, I'd like to put on the agenda for next meeting that we form our brush control committee.
The what?
The brush control committee.
Okay.
Um, I've got some stuff going on, uh, with the state and it would be nice if anybody's interested in serving on it. Um, I guess we could have three members on it, right? Without a forum?
Uh, I don't know that we didn't have more, but if it was done right, but, uh, yeah, I'm sure we'd have at least. But depending on how you do it, I don't know that you're, you're restricted or limited to not having forums. You just have to have meetings the right way. Uh, okay, we got that. We'll take any action on that. Motion adjourned.
Okay. I will, I need clarification, Mr. Okay. One time. Three percent just for the month of December.
Right, look what it is, but it's your annual amount.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's like instead of the three percent go over, over twelve months, you get a one-time payment as a bonus. All at one hour.
Of the annual salary.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So, if it's.
Thank you.
Fifty thousand dollars, you give.
That'd be a good job payment for me and you pick up.
You give fifteen hundred dollars instead of getting it spread out over twelve months or a year.
Yeah, I got you.
So, uh, we've got a motion to adjourn and I didn't really pitch the second, but I'll second it. Go ahead, what you got?
Uh, this is for future agenda items. Did they already close that?
No, you didn't want.
Well, I've just got a couple of questions, uh, right here. Let me make sure I get the right deal. It's on the. What do you call it? The, uh, budget that they report? Uh, it's science.
What's the financials?
Financial, yes, sir. The science says on annual budget that there's. One hundred and seventy-five thousand and then for the left in the budget is the same amount. Why? Science is what we're looking for on this stuff, on this water.
Okay, there's, there's two, two separate line items there. There's, there's science.
And I'm not, I'm just reading, I'm questioning because I'm not understanding it.
Okay. Cause part, part of it is.
Bills is periodic.
Budget year started in October too, so we probably.
Where the money's coming in. And, and I'm like I said, I'm not.
Nothing wrong, that's a good question.
Okay, uh, science equipment, this is, this is for equipment, you know, for the monitor wells and so forth. Uh, you know, the budget three hundred thousand for that.
And then what's, and the left in budget is the same amount and like nothing's being spent is what I'm asking. On the science and on the monitoring of the wealth.
We, we haven't gotten invoices yet.
Yeah, the fiscal year just started and that bill only periodically.
We're only, we're only what, uh, month or two into this budget year, so they just haven't got into it yet.
Okay, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, well, I think.
That will change.
It's coming.
Just wondering, I mean, we're talking about all the sciences of water and there's nothing.
Right.
That I'm seeing on here because I'm, my fiscal year don't start.
Right.
You know, that kind of, I don't thought.
We go January one to December third, right?
I'm, I'm here and I'm, okay.
But that will, yeah, and we've got, next month, we'll have, we've got two checks this month, so it will be, I'll show them next.
Yes.
This is where I think kind of follow along.
Right, and, and that's, that's a, you know.
But it was a question that, you know, I would, we were trying to do all this and the science and we wouldn't see anything and we had that.
Let's, let's, let's go on with that conversation after we get done with this last call. All those in favor of German, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All opposed.